And hopefully he'll.
Oh, I didn't, sorry. I can text him. There comes Laura. Is she coming online? Yeah, I see her coming right now. There we go. Okay, well, we'll go ahead. I'm sure he'll come in. Okay. All right, if everybody's ready, I will go ahead and call to order the work session for Wednesday, May 10th of the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. And we will go to, first, we can go to Citizens Input for any items not on the agenda. And seeing no Citizens with other items, we'll move to the Manager for Announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and public for joining us this afternoon for this May 10th work session of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are attending virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. Please, the public is asked to mute their microphone on the Zoom platform during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. And finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Here.
Ms. Dinnany?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have one item under unfinished business, and that's the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Objectives. And I'll go ahead and, I can read the narrative, and then we'll hand it over to Mr. Thompson. So, at the Climate Action Sustainable Committee meeting held on Monday, April 10th, 2023, each member was asked to complete the CAP exercise to help facilitate coordination between the CAP and municipal operations. The purpose of the exercise is for members to narrow down the CAP's 82 actions into actions that are more municipal-focused, provided the agenda is a link to the Google Sheet file that identifies the CAP's objectives and actions for each sector. And so what I thought we could do today is bring up that worksheet, ask Jeremy to go through by the sections, and he can let us know what he has previously identified as what will be a municipal-led activity, and then for each section, and then the rest of the board, manager can comment, ask any questions on that, agree, add, you know, whatever to each section. So my interpretation of what the activity is, and Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, is this is just to give the Climate Action Committee an idea of what actions will, out of this plan, will be municipal-led, regionally-led, county-led. They're going to take this feedback on the municipal portion and compile kind of a task list for municipalities that will then come back to municipalities to do what they wish to with, incorporate it in some way, whatever. So I think this is just a step in creating that plan, is just to give some feedback. So I don't, what, I don't think we need to get too deep into who could all the partners be, what, you know, what does this, you know, what all does each item mean? Because they're, they're pretty in-depth items. So I'm saying all this to say that I don't think we need to get too, too very in-depth on each individual item. This is just feedback. This is just to give Jeremy some confirmation of what he had first thought when he went through this, the list, and it's not binding us to any action or, or anything like that. So just for a little background. Now, that's my interpretation. So just, Jeremy, you can let me know if I've done that correctly, and then we'll go over to Laura. See her hands raised?
Yeah. You got it.
Okay, great. Okay, Laura, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I just, I think I need clarification on task. Thank you for the explanation. The point I wanted some clarification on, um, so what we say right now, after we agree as a board to say it, it's going to go on a list, and that list is going to be the list of responsibilities for our municipality only or all municipalities. So I, then my follow-up is, what other municipalities have taken an entire meeting to talk about this, and what have they decided? I have significant concerns about how much we want to bite off if others are not biting the same amount off. So if you could explain that, how that corresponds to this exercise? Thank you.
Thanks. Great question.
I, I think the one thing to keep in mind is, this isn't, I don't believe this is necessarily a, this is what we're gonna run with type of document. This is kind of just more of a, more of, you know, just feedback at this time. I know college township had gone through this. And yeah, as for the implementation, you know, that's, that's a discussion for a different day. And I also imagine probably some of these things, you know, maybe it will be, maybe one size won't fit all municipalities, so, you know, it may be something that, you know, we'll, we'll see how it goes. That answers your question, Laura.
Okay, so if we're item, so just to clarify, for item three, for each action, identify whether you think the action is best led municipal, regional, or other effort. I'm always going to say regional, then, I guess, based on your answer, because it's not, I don't, it's not clear to me how this is going to work in terms of Ferguson is a big leader here, and we are already doing a bunch of stuff, and there are other municipalities that may or may not be. So if we're saying municipal, then my thought is then that would mean that those municipalities that aren't taking hold of it and doing it on their own will then be left out, because they won't choose to do that. So my fallback will always be regional or higher up, so that they can be brought along. So thank you for entertaining my question.
Thanks. And I, I think I had, because I went through it once, too, of all the, the action items, and I think that was kind of my default a little bit, too. And then, so I, I didn't have, I don't know, I actually didn't count up how many I had as municipal, but...
I had about 30 to answer a question that you would ask me earlier.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, but I think that's right, and I think, you know, again, it doesn't bind us to anything. It's, you know, more a feedback, and, and I would think, you know, and Jeremy, you can bring those comments back to the committee with this, too, that, you know, one size probably doesn't fit all for, for all of this, and, and because this is housed regionally, you know, all of these things, they're automatically going to be generally-led regionally. So I, I think as we start to go through it, I think we can kind of...
And, and I, as I looked through a couple of them, I, I, and we're not gonna throw that out, throw this out today, but there was a few of them, it's like, well, maybe this is multiple agencies, and like even some of the educational pieces, I was thinking maybe that's more of maybe something outside of the government that is able to reach our constituents where they're at.
And I hope, I would think that that's what the committee will get into.
Right.
Kind of, you know, breaking, breaking that stuff down. So if we want to start, and let's just say we're, we'll start with the energy and buildings, and you can let us know what you thought would be municipal, if there's anything else we need to add to that, we can add.
Yeah, I was gonna screen share or whatever, but technical difficulties over here, but I can at least read it. So go into energy and buildings, and I, I don't know, you want me to read each one of them, I want to try to get through these relatively quick, understanding there are people that are joining us that need to get back to work and...
Yeah. Yeah, if you just want to read out the, like, you know, if it's EB3 dot 1, we can see what that is.
Okay. Well, actually, that whole section of improved energy efficiency, best practices in existing buildings, I think all three of those were good regional ones there.
Which one are you on?
EB1, under Energy and Buildings.
Oh, I had to scroll up. Okay, thank you.
Up and up.
Thank you, thank you.
Increase the number of new buildings and homes that are net zero, energy-ready, affordable, and resilient. All of those I had for municipal, with the exception of support partners in developing an affordable housing plan. I think that is best addressed regionally. And yes.
I have a comment about that. So I sort of, having just remodeled two houses, that's definitely a regional thing, and I wish there was a way for code to keep up with, like, who has heat pumps and who has, do you know what I mean? I wish there was a way that code could track all of that, because we took out an oil-burning furnace and things like that, but somehow it didn't, there was, I can't remember when I was applying for a permit or something, there was nothing to show that we had done that. So I'm not sure. So somehow I wish there was something that could be captured in code when you get your permits, and I don't know if we do that here at the municipal level, too, or if that's strictly a, a code thing, but...
And maybe that's a note that Jeremy can include on that item.
To determine types of HVAC sources.
Well, yeah, because one of the biggest things is, is from residential. I think we're resident, when I saw other pie charts and things like that, dashboards, residential was a big problem, but yet there was no way of tracking that we had changed our...
Okay, yeah, for carbon footprint, yeah, residential, yeah.
Yeah.
And I see Laura's hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, Laura. Or, sorry.
Yes, thank you. I guess, I'm still struggling a little bit, because let's just take one item, for example, which would be EB2.3. Advanced policies for building designs that perform better than code requirements for energy efficiency, electrification, and renewable energy. I've been working on something for many years that is just like that, except for, it's not for those goals, it's for goals of visitability and accessibility. The interplay between the municipality and the region, it's not something that just because we say on this paper that one or the other is gonna lead it, it's still going to be completely a group effort. And I guess, if you look at every single one of these, why would, why would we, if it's always going to be a group effort, and the staffing is going to be at the regional level, and already is, I don't understand why kind of we would even question if it was municipally-led? Or is it the case that if we, I'm sorry, yes, municipally-led? Or are we saying right now, taking EB2.3, that if we say it's regionally-led, are we then saying that the municipality can't strike out on their own and make an effort there, like the State College Borough did for accessibility, which I hope that Ferguson does for accessibility, whole different topic? Are we saying that we're not going to do that? Or are we just saying that we would like the region to put in the effort to assemble the documents, utilize the staff time, to lay out the foundation by which all of the municipalities could choose to do so, should they choose so? Because if it's that, if it's the latter, I'm still gonna say, why wouldn't all of them be regional? Because we're making, the program is a regional program that we're participating in, and we should be relying on the regional staff to do the foundation of all of these. And then we could, as municipalities, that's why it's not one-size-fits-all, we can choose to benefit from that if we want to. But I just, I guess, I'm still really stuck on why we would say it would be municipally-led if we're counting on the region to lay foundations for everyone for all of the things. Still back at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Did you want to...
I guess my point exactly, again, nothing's stopping, you know, a municipality from doing something, but there, there are obviously things that are easier done at the municipal level and other things done regionally, like, I, you know, guess for instance, like, we have our own police here, so we, you know, that's Ferguson Township, but when it comes to fire, we depend on our regional partners to be able to fulfill that service.
So did you have any, so, under EB2, you had a number of things for municipal, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, I thought all of those municipal, with the exception of support partners in developing an affordable housing plan.
I had the opposite, actually, because I thought, the only ones that I really, in this entire sheet that I had as municipal, were, were the ones that had anything about advancing policy or ordinances. And so I had EB2.3, advanced policy for building designs that better, that perform better than code. And I was thinking about things like in our TSD, where we were trying to incorporate some different things, or have the potential to, I should say. And then under EB3, consider an ordinance for all new municipal buildings to meet high-performance building standards, because that's an ordinance, so I had that as municipal. And then under EB4, integrate resiliency goals into plans, so-and-so, and other development plans, because I thought that goes back to something like our zoning in Saldo. So that's kind of where I landed in this whole category, and I'll go to Laura for comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective. I, even on those, while I understand that perspective, had it said implementation and adoption and implementation of said ordinance, I would agree, that's a municipal responsibility. But, you know, as we've spoken about for many years at this table, we struggle to find a unifying item that we all can get behind in terms of planning, right? Like, there, there are items that they do, a lot of times Ferguson is like, oh, we did that already, thanks for doing that, though. In this case, it's our first time really ever of us all being kind of at the same starting point. So when I'm looking at even things like ordinance, I, what I would like is those staff that are at the regional level to work with regional planning, and in fact, they're in the planning, right? The staff that is implementing this is in the planning department at the region. So the program plan for planning then is then integrated into this, so that they develop the ordinance, the model ordinance. That takes all of that work off of our staff plate, and then we can, as a board, bring it in to look and see if we want to adopt it. That's exactly how, if I understand correctly, the code change for the borough for accessibility, like, if Ferguson wants to pick that up, we have to work with the region to do that. That's a, that's like, the region will help us do that. I've talked to Walt about that. So again, I agree that ultimately they'd be...
to work with regional planning, and in fact, they're in the planning, right? The staff that is implementing this is in the planning department at the region. So the program plan for planning then is then integrated into this, so that they develop the ordinance, the model ordinance. That takes all of that work off of our staff plate. And then we can, as a board, bring it in to look and see if we wanna adopt it. That's exactly how, if I understand correctly, the code change for the borough for accessibility, like, if Ferguson wants to pick that up, we have to work with the region to do that. That's a, that's like, the, the region will help us do that. I've talked to Walt about that. So, again, I agree that ultimately they'd be a municipal responsibility, but now if the question is, who do we want to lead that? I want the region to lead it, I want them to do a model ordinance, please, so then we can look at it and adopt it for our own. That's how I'm thinking about it, and I appreciate the time to reflect on that.
That, that is a good point. That reminds me of a dev- development plan I had looked at, uh, behind the Red Lobster one time, that crossed Ferguson and Patton Township, and like, the developer said, oh, it's kinda nice that when it comes to like, U H A A and State College, they're working with the same company instead of multiple different agencies. And I, I can see some points where it would be nice if the ordinances were maybe crafted at the region, then adopted by the municipalities, with maybe some small tweaks to necessary for that municipality. So it's not like you got six, seven different interpretations of the ordinance all around the same, uh, region.
And I think, I think the broader point is having it start regionally with that model ordinance. So it, it provides that template, that groundwork of, this is how you implement this over here, knowing we've got all kinds of different zoning districts all across the region that are, you know, you, one ag is, you know, just gonna be different than another. So it's, it's still gonna be, have to be, uh, modified to meet the needs of that, but I think, I think that's a great point. I think that would be worthwhile, including, um, in any, I mean, I guess I would probably put that comment, um, under EB two-three, you know, to have, there was something somewhere else, maybe it was under land use, that talked about drafting model ordinances. I forget, we'll get to it, but, um, just to keep us moving, I think, I think that's maybe a broader point that I would agree with, and we can look to the rest of the board to say, you know, that this is why we have these, uh, these positions at COG, is to, you know, kinda lay this groundwork. They're the experts in this field, and we're sharing this resource, so help us lay this groundwork. Okay, yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's a helpful comment.
Going to my point, some of these may be actually multi-agency.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I think that's what the committee is gonna get into and find, you know, that it's not just black and white, that, you know, we can, uh, point to, yes, you, you go with this. Some of these maybe, um, as we move forward, and particularly with Ferguson, because we have taken on so much that it might be different for us than somebody else coming in that hasn't taken a lot of these steps yet.
We'll get another look at this, so...
Right. Now, did you have anything else for EB three or EB four? I said mine, that I had marked as municipal, but would, you know, welcome that comment that maybe it's, you know, municipal, regional, were EB three point three and EB four point three.
So three, three point three, I had municipal and even marked, you know, that's something we've been working on. And then I had municipal for EB two. EB three-one, designate an energy coordinator, I wasn't quite sure where to put that. I think that might be something maybe as a region, we need to maybe have a little more discussion on before we determine where that goes.
My question about that too was, is that just some, somebody who's monitoring that at each municipality? Are they, or is it an actual position? So Laura, I saw your hand up, maybe you had a similar question.
I did have that, sorry, I did have that similar question, like, what is the meaning of that item? And I also wanted to, if we have a moment, Chair, to, to get, uh, Mr. Modricar's input on this, because I'm still right there at that regional idea, I'm like, oh, the region, the region, but maybe on this one, again, there's always gonna be a partnership, we're doing it together, but we're talking about the leading. On this one, maybe the municipal does lead on the lead. But Mr. Modricar, when you're looking at EB three, if this is okay, Chair, um, like, what, what are you seeing in terms of workflow that would be like the best way of, should the region be leading and providing some guidance? Or should the municipality be leading on this one? Or is it totally equal?
Yeah, good afternoon. Interesting discussion, because the title is maximize efficiency of municipal facilities, equipment and operations. I think the person closest to that is gonna be at the municipality. I think it would be, uh, beneficial if each municipality had a, someone that assumed that role, that they met together and talked and communicated, and, you know, as with many other things, met regionally to, uh, you know, review everybody's efforts. But because it's kind of under the category of efficient municipal facilities, I thought it would probably be a municipal lead.
If I might just add to that, thank you, Mr. Modricar. Here's one item of deep confusion throughout this process, is every time I've said, hey, why is it just the municipalities, municipal facilities here? Because like, the region has many, many millions of dollars in facilities. And every time I've gotten this answer, municipal means regional and municipal. So let that be super-duper confusing to all of us. Also, you'll probably write, is there also no corresponding maximize efficiency of regional facilities, equipment and operation? I think that if there's no corresponding thing, section that says that, that we actually have to interpret this as both. And maybe a comment could be, could we put that in there? And still same points that you're making, Mr. Modricar, about the municipal part of that, but maybe just adding that word, maximize efficiency of regional and municipal facilities, if we added that in the header of that, it may change EB three-one, EB three-two and EB three-three a little bit. Based on knowing that that's an inner, that's all of it, right there. Um, maybe Chair, I don't know, I, like, don't, I can't scroll and I don't have the link open, but is there another section that says regional facilities?
I don't think so, because I was thinking that when I was going through this section too.
No, it's because, it's because the language we have chosen to use is adding to massive confusion. So, um, that's a thing.
Thanks, thanks Dave for that input, I think that's really helpful. So, um, I see Jeremy taking a lot of notes down, so he'll have a lot of, um, comments to bring back on particularly that, that portion of it, so I think that makes sense.
Laura brings up a good point, because I'm sure if you loo- look at the definition of municipal, even a regional facility is a municipal facility. So, yeah, clear definition of what's what.
Right, yeah, the, the items, yeah, and I think we see that later on too. They're pretty either broad, or I just, you know, I wasn't in the conversation when they were written out, so I'm just not entirely clear on what everything is, so. But something like that energy coordinator, is that somebody who's just tracking things? So I think that would be a great question to bring back.
And, and I had put down, kinda need more information, what, what's the job duties of that coordinator? Like, is this a whole nother staff position, or could this even be maybe something that responsibilities are added to? Centris and Dave, who are, or Dave, who are already working so hard, you know, so?
Yeah, I think that's the question, yeah.
Also, how, how, you know, if we were to do it at the municipal, of course, I need to stop getting too far into it, but, you know, can it actually work out in our municipality, or we max out on staff?
Anything else on energy and buildings?
Uh, I just finished out the enhanced resiliency throughout the community, uh, section is regional.
Mm-hmm. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, let's move forward to renewable energy. Did you have anything?
Renewable energy, uh, develop a resilient energy portfolio through diversified sources of local generation. Had municipal for everything, with the exception of partner with utilities and stakeholders to maintain a high degree of reliability during extreme weather events. Kinda feel like that's more of like a county level, even a state level. It even says partner with utilities, so that could even, you know, include, it's usually all hands on deck when you get into severe weather events, depending on what happens.
So my question in this one is, I guess this is again referring to municipal and COG facilities, because it's the, you know, it means the local government action. So, um, so I did think, you know, incre- RE one dot one, increasing onsite renewable energy systems and electrification, that could be municipal, and that's something we're actively working on. RE one point three, I had municipal, but again, I, I think that's probably better regionally-led to, to, or kicked off really, to give an indication, since they house emergency services too. Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I guess I, I would agree that, I don't, I'm not sure, I guess I don't really understand the process of sole smart silver or gold certification. I'm afraid that what we're doing by saying municipal-led is that we're dumping work on our municipal staff. And I, I'm not clear that we aren't. And then like, E, E R E one point three, municipal resiliency and integration of battery and microgrid technologies for weather resistance and operations, like, we're doing that kind of a thing, but we're also, like, I'm not gonna talk too much about it, but when there are emergency situations, we have multiple municipal relationships of backup situations, and we want to be doing that on a regional resiliency kind of a level. So, I'm back to regional again, but at this point, I'm actually gonna say that the internal inconsistency and invalid, invalid nature of how we're using the word municipal and refusing to put the word regional in the left column is, is actually very problematic. And, and the reason I'm realizing it's so problematic, if you look at the right column, it says led by municipal, regional or other effort. So there, in that language, we designate municipal and regional. Why are we failing to do that in the left column? Why are we consistently leaving out the word regional in the left column and solely using the word municipal? So why doesn't RE one point three read, explore regional and municipal resiliency and integration of battery and microgrid technology? Certainly, the regional facilities are much more suited to that. We use the word regional over on the right column, but by not using it on the left column, we have, it, it's a logic trap. We have actually pigeonholed ourselves into only saying municipal, because regional has been left out on the left, okay? So if it said, explore regional and municipal resiliency, we would have no question but to say regional. So going through this document, I think that we need to choose if we want to explicitly define municipal as solely municipal on the left, or we need to choose and explicitly define municipal as municipal and regional on the left, and read it that way every simple time. Thank you, that's it. And I think that it should, I think, I'm still thinking it should be all regional, especially based on the re, on the, um, the error that's embedded in this. There's an error embedded in here by, by, by making a non-parallel language.
Thanks, yeah, I'd agree with that comment. I think, um, you know, the ones, the items we saw in the first category, I think we could really say municipal slash, uh, COG slash regional facilities. I think in particular with this RE one, uh, point three, um, or maybe RE one point four, I'm thinking of, with the extreme weather events, um, you know, anything that's related to emergency services really needs to have, um, a municipal and, and regional plan. And, uh, obviously, I think that needs to be led regionally, since that's where our emergency services is housed, so... I think where I'm leaning is anything I have had, had marked municipal. I'm now making municipal slash regional, with regional being the kickoff partner of, you know, giving us a template, giving us starter language, giving us some, some initial input of where to, where to start whatever policy, ordinance, program they want, uh, an individual municipality to, to, uh, take on. So, and just keeping us moving here, I actually didn't have anything else for RE two or RE three. Did you have anything else that would be municipal for the rest of this category?
As for municipal, um, RE three-one, advocate for statewide standards to ensure support for energy efficiency and renewable energy, and promote solar panel recycling, and advocate for fa- federal and state-level mandates for recycling.
Yeah, those are a couple I thought about too, and I, again, I'd say, you know, I wouldn't want that to be, I would, and I didn't mark them as municipal, just because I wouldn't think that that should be, or needed, I would say needed, needed to be taken on initially by the municipalities. Laura, s your hand up?
Thanks, I just had a question. So what was decided on in the RE one point one, increase onsite renewable energy systems and electrification? Did we decide who we want to lead that? And let me go back to my, the essential error in the document. If we said municipal, which would make sense for our municipality, then we've left out the region in the answer. Or is it, did we decide on a regional slash municipal leadership, or did we decide on regional leadership? So the way I'm reading it, increase onsite renewable energy systems and electrification, we want the region to lead that for the region, right? Like, we can't municipally lead that for the region, so is that, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you guys. Did we, I don't know what we decided for that one.
Yeah, if that's, I mean, my comment, if that is a munis- related to a municipal building, then I had municipal on that, but then I think the question that Jeremy had written down to go back was, what, what all facilities are you talking about? If you're talking about regional facilities, then it's not municipal, so...
Okay, thanks.
Cause I agree with you.
And if they're not talking, if they're not talking about regional facilities in that one, the next question is where? Where are they then talking about the regional facilities?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I mean, I think that's an important question of clarification. I think, um, us bringing that up again and again is just kinda reinforcing the discussion that needs to happen back at the committee before they come up with the list, or, you know, whatever, uh, whatever they're gonna use this feedback for. So again, we were on the advocacy, um, items under RE three point one and point four. You know, that's another one that I would put regionally, but whatever, um, you know, I'd look for comment.
I, I was just thinking, I have seen us do like letters to support or even resolutions that, you know, go out to those, um, state and federal officials to, you know, work with that. And I even put in a note there, maybe even something to spin off the P M L to get more advocacy going.
Now, I agree, and I think, um, you know, those things have come through, where I'd like to see them, I think back to Laura's point of, you know, we have our, uh, staff dedicated to this at COG, so having them write those things, you know, forward them around to the municipalities to endorse and, and send out as needed. Of course, any, you know, something else can always come up, you know, and that, that doesn't preclude a board saying, oh, we know about this one issue and we really wanna write a letter about it. It's just saying, let this be, my, my thought is let this be part of that staff's, uh, work plan to, you know, put out those template letters and say, here's something we think supports our goals, let's, let's all, you know, consider, consider supporting this. So, yeah, again, another one that I had, regional. Okay, if there's nothing else on renewable energy, if you think you have enough feedback, and, and mostly questions there maybe, which I think is healthy, I think it's good at this point to, to go back to the committee for more discussion. If there's nothing else, we can go on to, uh, sustainable transportation. Did you have anything, is, you wanted to talk about under here?
Uh, yeah, for, well, for, uh, S T one, encourage driving cleaner, more efficient vehicles in traffic operations. I had a whole mix of different responses, um, but... But for the last one, reduce the emissions footprint for municipal vehicles, I put it as municipal because it said municipal.
Comments at Laura?
Okay, so, again, if we're, if we're reading that as just the municipalities in the strictest sense, then we're leaving out all of code vehicles, all of park vehicles. There's, there are no other line items that I can see that would relate to that. And oddly, more internal invalidity, like ST 1.1 is creating a regional strategy, a regional strategy, but then ST 1.4 is the footprint of municipal. So, I think we should be reading it as Pam Adams has said to me, that when we see municipal on the left-hand side, it should say municipal slash regional. And I think that really the sole comment that matters to me in all of this is to straighten out the internal consistency of this document, so that we all are aligned around it. Because two years from now, what's going to happen is people are going to be pointing fingers at who didn't do what, and they're going to be pointing back to this word. So, that's my, thank you. There's internal inconsistency, and I think that we should note that. And my opinion is that the region should be responsible for the regional strategy for the region and all the regional assets. And then the municipalities can learn from that and be supported by the knowledge that is acquired by that staff doing those processes. Mr. Mudrich's point is well-taken, and that group that's formed, that fleet person in each municipality is going to be invaluable, and it is going to take their time, but hopefully, what I'm hoping, is that their sole effort is in bringing and taking and not actually all of the effort of the research and doing. So, thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. Did you comment on that one? Because I agree, and I think, you know, my thought on, you know, where it said municipal here was municipal slash COG regional, whatever word we want to use for that. And then the responsibility would be municipal slash regional relative to those.
Yeah, I've kind of just made a general comment on that one to go back on. I will note out, for like, community outreach on purchasing clean vehicles, including incentives, I kind of left that as an other. Like, it'd be great if we were to be a part, if some level of government wants to be a part of that, but I almost think that's kind of maybe better somewhere outside of government, you know, where consumers are. I remember years ago, the government was offering like rebates, you know, if you traded in your, like, your old car. And it kind of seemed like, once they put that up, the automakers were, you know, releasing marketing and advertising that was going direct to those consumers, like, hey, get some money back for your car, you know? And I don't know, I think somewhere outside of government that can probably, that educational outreach piece could probably be more effective than if you or I were to just go out with a sandwich board and try to get people to buy electric cars.
Cash for clunkers.
Cash for clunkers, yeah.
I remember that, yeah. I agree. That was kind of my thought reading through this, was I wasn't quite sure where that fit into our local government action plan. So I'd, you know, I'd support that as a comment back on that.
And I think that'd even generate a lot of media attention too, so, you know, again, where those constituents are.
I mean, and when there's 82 items on this list, I think looking for places we can, you know, you know, reduce a little bit, kind of, you know, let's look at what we can really accomplish. I think this is that time that's, you know, that the committee will have the opportunity to say, this really isn't, you know, does this really fit in there? So, yeah.
And I left examine strategies for shared mobility and shared micromobility as regional, but I did note, it'd be kind of nice if that was a little more defined, like, are we talking about carpooling, or bike paths, or, you know, a mix of, you know, just what that definition was. So, just in, you know, noting that. If there's no other questions, I'm ready for the next section.
Okay, you didn't have anything else under municipal for sustainable transportation?
Improve walking infrastructure, I put that down as municipal. We tend to be responsible for that. ST 3.1, increase compact and contiguous development, I put down municipal. Align parking options and infrastructure for bikes and EVs with climate goals, I put that down as municipal. But again, noting what we've talked about today, probably be helpful to get regional to kickstart that, and then we go from there. And the last section, improve and build resilience in our transportation systems, I had municipal for everything with the exception of ST 4.3, implement recommendations in the center of county long-range transportation plan. Again, a regional effort, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree with the sidewalk one, if that's what they're talking about for walking infrastructure. Under ST 4, I guess I saw a lot of that as regional. Coordinate stakeholders to improve real-time monitoring. I guess they're just kind of so broad too. Coordinate the stakeholders to improve real-time monitoring of flooding and traffic and traffic operations. I'm not quite sure what, what they're trying to accomplish, but I was just really unclear about a couple of these. So, didn't want to bring them into the municipality because I was not clear on exactly what they were asking. So, I guess that would just be a comment, would be the question of, please define what this means. I'm seeing some heads nod, yeah. So some of these, I think, and again, I think it's different when you're in a room and you're discussing this over a long period of time, and you're putting, you know, okay, this is what we're going to write into this plan, and then somebody else picks it up a year or so, two years later, and is trying to figure out what that meant. So I think this is that time to say it's unclear. So if we're all sitting around kind of unclear, I think it's good to kind of reassess. And I'll, go ahead, Jeremy, and then we'll go to Laura.
I was going to say, kind of like our planning commission days, you know, for those of us that have been here a little bit longer, it's like, yeah, we know about this plan and this effort, whereas Patty or Cory, you know, you'd be like, what are you talking about?
Yeah, and it's just, yeah, and walking into it, like I said, I wasn't on these committees, so just walking into and reading it now, I just, I need more, more description on what they're talking about. Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I agree, there's some confusing language for me to receive in these two sections. Also, I am, when it says something like, "Increase compact and contiguous development", does that mean landowners? Hey, develop this property that you don't own, as opposed to this one you want to own. Does that mean regional planning and the regional growth boundary and the comp plan that we're supposed to align with? And it's actually supposed to guide us directionally? It guides us, we don't guide it? Or does it mean the zoning map, which we have control over? If it means all three, can we say that because it relates to very different responsibilities? So that's the increase compact and contiguous development. It's sort of like a vision as opposed to something more specific, so that's part of the confusion, I think, there. And then prioritize multimodal development, I think that's transportation system development, through investment incentives and regulation. That's a lot, and a bunch of different partners. So prioritizing multimodal transportation development would be CCMPO countywide, also regional planning, also us. Incentives, I don't even know if there is such a thing, but it sounds great. I think it would be prioritized as being other-led because it sounds like a lot to chomp off there. And then regulation, I think, then that relates solely to the municipality and the state because I think we are the only ones with that vested ability. But what does that mean? So those are my, those are my comments on that. A lot of mostly confusion and asking for some explication. Thank you.
Want to know something sad, Laura? Because I was listening to that, and I'm like, oh, I forgot, I was actually looking at the transportation section.
Yeah.
There's a lot there.
There's a lot there, yeah.
There's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the thing, once you get into this, each item was so big, you know, each individual task, and maybe it wasn't meant to be, I don't know. Again, that's just another, you know, clarification question. So, and I know our time is running down, so we're going to try to move through these next few items rather quickly. The last thing I wanted to say on sustainable transportation is, this was put together, I guess, before the active transportation plan was planned at CCMPO. So I think that needs to be added in here as another item to work with the active, or integrate the active transportation plan process. Because they're going to be doing engagement and, you know, so many different activities just with that piece alone. Yeah, so I think that's going to accomplish maybe, you know, maybe a lot of what they wanted to do here. So, if there's nothing else on transportation, Laura, I see your hand up. But it may have been up, okay. And so we'll move on to solid waste.
I had a lot of blanks on this one, looking at the first section, develop guidelines of education resources to shape the procurement policies of the municipal and commercial sectors. I honestly think we need more information before we can make a decision on that, as well as develop systems and infrastructure to promote and institutionalize reusable goods.
I don't understand.
Yeah, yeah, point exactly. So, I, you know, if everyone's good, just leave that more information.
More information, yeah.
I'll go into the next section if we have any questions.
I mean, I can understand that, I mean, that's essentially where you would put in a single-use span on plastics, right? Would be part of the systems and infrastructure, maybe? But that's so big.
But that could be the question too, that we send back with Jeremy, you know, is this what you're talking about?
That could also, yeah. Talk about bad man, that could fall under incentivize businesses versus strategies that minimize their waste.
Yeah. Right, yeah, good comments. Okay, if there's nothing else on solid waste, and I'll just say again, anything I thought maybe, you know, where they had municipal, I was like municipal government and government entities lead in becoming low-waste generators, again, that's something I would want the region to say here, you know, for them to create these steps for, you know, us to look at and analyze and say, can we adopt any of these at the municipal level? So.
My understanding being, making contracts regionally, right? In terms of garbage collection and all those sorts of things. How does the borough, how is the borough doing compost collection? Is that something that the borough is sponsoring separate from our garbage contracts?
They have their own system.
Everything's all in-house.
They have their own operational system for refuse and recycling at the St. Collet de Borough. Yeah, they're separate. Laura, go ahead.
Thanks. That's a great question, Cory, something that we've touched on but not really been able to dig fully into. I guess I'll just say again, if we are interpreting SW 2.1 as municipal, meaning strictly municipal government, we are leaving out COG, parks, everything as a goal of becoming a low-waste generator. So I'll say that in addition to the idea that Lisa brought forward, that chair brought forward, that the region would be laying out that plan or helping guide us, they're also included. And the document, again, fails to identify that. So, thank you. That's it.
Yeah, agreed, and I'd support that as a comment as well. Okay, if nothing on that, we will go to land management. Anything in this section that you wanted to consider to be municipal?
The first two in section L1. L2, I just kind of, L2 I definitely put in as an other. L3, only that first one is municipal. And then section L4, support land managers becoming more resilient, I put all those down as municipal.
Comments on this section?
I did, on that last section, I did kind of leave some notes that those might be more multi-partner, partnered efforts, so.
Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that the main comment that I have for this section is that, given the extraordinary amount of parkland that the region provides operations and maintenance for, it's remarkably missing from this section. So, I think it's over 1,000 acres that they manage. Right now, we're deep in discussion about our $11 million potential investment into Millbrook Marsh, that's a, that's a stormwater asset for Penn State. These are all very important land management things that I just, I see it as missing here. So, what about electric mowers? What about reduction of mowing in the parks? What about herbicides and pesticide application in parks, reduction of that? There's a lot of land management of our parkland that seems to be missing and not really spelled out. Things you could even get more in-depth, utilizing, I think perhaps tracer would be an asset to utilize, to do spatial analyses on transportation of mowing assets to various locations to reduce transportation time and best use and make most efficient use of our resources for mowing. So I think that, that all of that is really missing. We're not really acknowledging that. The closest it comes here, which I don't really understand, is analyze farmland and parkland to identify disadvantaged prop land, land that can be more productive for other uses, perennial cropping, solar installation, and riparian buffers. So the only time parkland, I, maybe I missed it, anywhere else. The only time I see it is there where it's lumped in with farmland. Lastly, I'll say, although farmers for sure bear share of climate change stuff, this section of land management seems to be exceptionally focused on our ag community and not our own land. So, that's it. Thanks.
And I did see a lot of ag with in there, which I think would lead to, we need to partner, those probably are better in partnership with like Farm Bureau and State and USDA to address. Or they can at least help model what municipalities should do.
The only one that I specifically had for municipal in this, in land management, was review and update ordinances to allow for native plantings, no-mo, lomo. That's the only one I specifically had for municipal. I see Laura's hand up, go ahead.
I agree with that, because of the way it's written, review and update, but I don't know if everybody has already designed, implemented, adopted and implemented, so if there is a need for a model ordinance, like, we may be able to provide it, but probably the region should take the lead on that, so, if that's the case, I don't know where others are in that, thanks.
That's true, we probably have the model ordinance at this point. But again, I think the comments that you're probably getting back here is, you know, this, clarify what assets they're talking about, you know, municipal versus regional, you know, what exactly are the details of each task, kind of separating our ag land and parkland, and identifying ways we can, that regionally, we can look at this parkland things, okay. Anything else on land management, and if not, we will move to clean, healthy water.
Hey, we're an hour in, and on the last section. I had a lot of municipal over here.
Yeah.
Okay. So managing, manage flooding and reduce erosion impacts on infrastructure, I had all those as municipal, with the exception of incentivized implementation of green infrastructure on private property, I went with an other on that. Identify road access issues related to flooding electrical distribution, energy systems, emergency management, I left that as regional as well. Don't think we get a lot of flood, flooding, except for the one-hundred-year flood, remember, park forests and some places in town here flooded. Grow and maintain healthy tree canopy. I had all those as municipal, with the exception of develop a center-region tree strategy for public properties in the community. Under increase the region's resiliency by restoring, protecting and conserving community water resources, the only one that I had as municipal was identify opportunities for rainwater collection systems, riparian buffers and water reuse at existing and new public facilities and properties. I guess, I think some of those, I think about are like stormwater ordinance, because I believe that's kind of where we're bringing those opportunities to the forefront. And then restore and protect ecosystems and promote ecosystem resilience, I had all those as municipal down there, because, yeah, we've touched base on a lot of those when it comes to stormwater and climate here.
Comments on this section? Go ahead, Laura.
Thanks, I also wanted to ask Mr. Modricar about W one-point-four, identify road access issues related to flooding electrical distribution. As I understood it, we have like a legal responsibility, like, if there's flooding on the road, I know it's like the biggest deal, it's because it's dangerous, so are we like legally, is that one, W one-point-four, identify road access issues related to flooding electrical distribution, energy system emergency management? I'm not sure, road access issues. I don't know quite what that means, but is that seated in the municipality legally, is my question, Dave? Or sentries, or whomever knows the answer to that?
Yeah, when I looked at that, in my mind, that question, when they said road access, if they meant public roads or private roads, because obviously, the public roads within the municipalities, we take care of, the private roads going from the public roads to an electric distribution system or some other area, we don't necessarily, you know, it's not within our jurisdiction.
So other?
Just to identify them, you know, when we're aware of them, we typically take measures to make them better and put something in our, in our CIP. You might remember, there was a long time on Whitehall Road where we had roads subject to flooding signs, I don't, I don't know that they're there anymore, but we took steps to try to mitigate that. So usually, when I see roads subject to flooding signs, I think, well, you're aware of it, you know, what's the next step, which would usually take some kind of measure to try to make it better.
Thank you, thanks. And then the other question I had, and, you know, I've been saying regional for all of these, and this may be like with Mr. Modricar, but like, and also in her place with the MS four, I think, but incentivized implementation of green infrastructure on private property, like, that is a subject we just kind of skirt around and semi-address. We've gone out on a field trip to a private property about green infrastructure slash, so, when we're looking at this, incentivized implementation of on private property, Mr. Modricar, is that, is that a regional or a municipal function to incentivize implementation?
That could be, as you've talked about before, implemented at a municipal level, but, you know, the plan or policy or the footprint put together at the regional level. In Ferguson Township, we do have language in our stormwater ordinance, and we also have credits for the stormwater fee that, to some extent, address that item.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks, that's all I have.
Sure.
Other comments on?
When it comes to the road access related to flooding, I'm wondering if that was kind of crafted, understanding, just kind of crafted regionally, because like, I'm trying to think of places in Ferguson Township where that's like constantly a problem, like Dave Modricar said, we work on that, but there, I think there are some municipalities where there are long, some smaller streams and creeks that you get a big enough rain event, they're always going to flood.
So that might be the question, because I think what I'm hearing is if it's a public road, we'll address it, so that would be municipality, but then maybe the comment question going back is clarify if this is a public road, and that, that'll determine the answer, I think, so, okay. You know, a couple of these I did put as municipal, because I know we're doing them, and so, the municipal street tree guide and landscape design standards is W two-point-two. You know, a couple of things, I thought, if we're doing them, you know, we've taken that on as municipality, and so this is something other municipalities can take on, and, and kind of the opposite, save that staff time at cog, where, you know, we know we can take this on. So, I had W two-point-two, and W two-point-three as municipal, since we have those. And, yeah, I had W three-point-one, because I felt like that fed into our stormwater ordinance, so identify opportunities for rainwater collection systems, but, again, if this is going to also relate back to cog and regional facilities, then that would be the question I'd send back for that. And then, yeah, I think that's it, I think that's what I had for, for municipal there, so. Laura?
I agree with those, and then, I also see that there may be language here that would suffice to replace the word municipal everywhere, which would be public facility. So if we use that public facility as opposed to municipal or regional, unless we actually met municipal or regional, public facility throughout might help clarify the confusion.
That's, thanks, that's a good one.
That would be a comment I would, I would like to make, that would be a suggestion from their own document, I'm sure they could provide others, but I think elevating the need for that is what's most important to me, thank you.
I'm almost thinking they need to have like, the definitions put down, because when I see like, public, okay, is that this building? Is that the post office? Or is that Walmart?
Yeah, so I think, I think those are great questions and clarifications, so, you know, the committee can take time to, you know, really think about and make, because you want this to be a really useful tool, especially if they're pulling things out and handing them back to municipalities and probably others that haven't done as much as Ferguson Township, and will use this as a tool, so, and, you know, maybe implement into their strategic plan, and so I think you really want to make it as clear and useful as possible, this is the stage to get that done, so. I didn't have anything else on that, on this exercise, I'll see if, Jeremy, if you need anything else, if you've got all the comments and feedback you think you wanted?
I think, I think we got everything.
Okay, was there any other comment on this item? I really appreciate everybody's time and thought, because this is one of those things, again, where it's so hard to go back and change things, and we do have an opportunity at this point, I think, to clarify this and make it a really workable document, so really appreciative of everybody's time and, and staff's contribution to this, and, you know, I know it was kind of a lengthy document, so I'm appreciative of that. And I'll bring us back to our agenda, okay. So if there's nothing else on that item, we'll go to calendar items, I did want to point out that our next regular board meeting is May fifteenth, Monday, since election day is May sixteenth, and bulk waste collection is May twenty-second to twenty-sixth. So if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn, so moved. And I will second, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.